Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled and end of 2019 meeting of the Joint Authority and Canals Board. I'm John Colwell, Chair of the Board, and want to welcome my fellow members, Balboni McKibben, the Candrian trainer. Trustee Pessante is unable to join us today, has been excused. And as you'll hear at the end of the meeting, Trustee Kress has resigned in connection with a new professional opportunity. She's accepted in Virginia, so kudos to her. And as we'll note at the end of our session, our loss, she's left us in a better place. I also want to welcome Gil and his team, some of whom are assembled, more of whom will return a little bit later in our session. With all that, we'll note that this meeting has been duly noticed as required by open meetings law, and I therefore call our joint meeting to order. The agenda's been before us, and unless anyone has any amendments, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Michael, thank you. Tracy, second, thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Agenda as presented is approved. As we typically do, we'll start the meeting with a brief executive session. And if I could, ask for a motion to approve or to move to such session. Dennis, thank you very much. Tracy, with a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. As said, we'll be in exec session for plus or minus an hour, and we'll be back to you then. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everyone. Excuse me. We are now ready to resume our meeting in open session. If I can have a motion to do so, please.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Thank you, Judge. Tracy, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We're back in session. As always, we'll reaffirm that no votes were taken while we were in executive session. We've all had the opportunity to advance, review the contractors list, and indicate any conflicts. I want to ensure there's no other changes or updates included. Terrific. The agenda, we start with our consent agenda. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review that. Unless there's any questions or concerns, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thanks, Michael. Second. Dennis, thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, with that, Gil, start us up, please.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Colwell, members of the trustees, management, and the public at large who are watching us via video. My report this month will be brief. I always start with our scorecard. We are, our goal is to finish strong in 2019, and I think that's exactly what we're doing. The red and the yellow that you see here, the red will be trending to, that's a timing issue, that will be green by the end of the year. The dart rate where we're kind of hanging in there, Joe, and, but, you know, there's a possibility that that will turn to green by the end of the year.
We're off by a basis point. We're better than hanging in there.
In our last board meeting, you received an update, a status update, of where we are with our NIPA Vision 2030, which is our new strategy. Just want to recap with you the major aspects and the next steps. So this is our vision for 2030, a thriving and resilient New York powered by clean energy. And the associated mission, new mission, will be leading the transition to a carbon-free, economically vibrant New York through partnership with customers on innovative energy solutions and the responsible supply of affordable, clean, reliable electricity. This is our response to the new legislation and the new policy agenda of our state called the Climate Leadership and Community Partnership Act, CLCPA.
The highlighted words are?
The highlighted words are...
The changes you've made?
No, concepts that we would like to emphasize in our mission and vision. And you'll see that more, that the, at the heart of our NIPA Vision 2030 strategy is really the customer. We're putting the customer at the center of this energy transition, energy transformation in terms of decarbonization, creating value for our customers, and spurring economic development. So as we unfold our strategy and we start the implementation, you will see that we will have a laser focus on our customers.
And Gil, just so, obviously, the customers are important, and then I assume under the clean economic development is the incorporation of the community.
Yes, so clean economic development will include, as a big feature on it, our just transition, our, obviously, our environmental justice principles and sustainability principles, which will have a focus on the communities where we operate, and also communities that we can impact statewide.
Maybe clarify how much of a pivot you think we're really making with the customer-centric focus. I would hate to imply we haven't been focused on our customers. How much of a pivot do you think this implies?
It's not a big pivot, but it's a completely different approach than, I would say, most utilities in our sector. Most utilities in our sector, their response to climate change has been, we will clean up our portfolio, meaning that we will be either carbon-free or carbon-neutral by 2050 or 2040. They are own-generation plants, and that's been, you know, the focus, whether, you know, companies like Xcel and Southern California Edison, et cetera, have been focused on cleaning up their portfolio. In our case, we're saying, we are going to work with our customers and help them decarbonize their own energy systems. So it's a framing, it's a different framing, not to say that our previous strategy was not customer-centric, because it was.
Okay, great clarity. Thank you.
Our plan is to create the business cases that will allow us to go to you in March during our annual meeting to seek investments, or at least allocation of investments in six strategic themes. So Eve Noel, with the support of Doug McMahon, are working, and their teams, working with all of us, to create the business cases that we bring back to you in March to say, here's what we want to do under, for example, affordable and reliable clean electric supply. How do we green the electrons of our customers? Energy efficiency, how do we optimize their use of energy? Electrification, to decarbonize, we are going to start to need targeting heating, space heating, hot water, because they still use fossil fuels, so over time, there must be a transition to electrification. Of course, electric vehicles, which we're heavily investing as part of our moonshot, building charging stations, et cetera. Another important theme is demand flexibility. With more solar and wind that are intermittent electric supply, we need to make the grid more flexible and customer demand more flexible to respond to that type of an electric supply. So flexibility is going to be a big aspect of what we're going to be doing. And technology, our digital strategy particularly, will play a huge role in terms of flexibility. And that's basically, you know, our, the next theme is continuing, leaning in and investing more in digital transformation, NIPA, the way we engage our customers, the delivery of our products and services, all of that, we will continue to digitize. And lastly, to be able to execute this plan, we need to have a trained, we need to have a qualified and motivated workforce. So a lot of organizational development and staff development, recruiting talent, retaining talent, is going, always going to be core to our strategy. So the next step will be to bring this back to you in March for the business cases for investments.
Quick question.
Yes, Judge.
Are manufacturers moving in this direction as well? For example, are manufacturers of, let's say, dishwashers or washing machines or dryers, are they in the electronics that you can set time of day for that sort of things that take place?
Yes, Judge, from the technology perspective, yes. You know, this term smart homes is beginning more and more to be in our lexicon. If you go to Best Buy or Home Depot, you know, smart thermostats, et cetera. So it's beginning. One of the challenge that we have is at the federal level, the federal government is rolling back some of those, what's called appliance efficiency standards that can impact that. But I think by and large, because of technology innovation and economics, that manufacturers are pushing forward anyways in making their devices and systems smarter, so that they can respond to signals from the grid or from prices. The second update I want to give you is the reimagine the canals. We're continuing to refine the recommendations in the reimagine the canals. The task force just concluded their meeting last week, and so now is the process to put a little bit more meat on the bone, so that this initiative can be launched next year. And so we'll give you more update. As I mentioned to you, the competition we held two years ago, task force just completed its work. We've reached out to communities along the canals, we've sought input from the web, from citizens who care about the canals, and the next step really is that we will have very specific recommendations for your review and approval next year.
Earlier?
Early, yeah, in January, first quarter, certainly.
Yeah, because at this point, part of our 2020 plan includes a status quo placeholder allocation.
Correct.
To perpetuate, you know, the current environment, but with an expectation that this will evolve, begin to evolve and...
That's correct. So, and we will discuss that later when our CFO presents our budget, that it, it's this current run rate for canals, but when we start making specific recommendations and initiatives for reimagine the canals, we will go back to the board for modifications to that base budget. I also want to give you an update on where we are with U.S. Virgin Islands, the mutual assistance that we're providing to U.S. Virgin Islands and Puerto Rico. We're basically doing four things. We're helping them stabilize their grids so that they're not suffering frequent regional or island-wide blackouts. So we're looking at their control systems, at their power plants, to make sure that they're more stable. We're also helping them on an ongoing basis to create applications and projects for making their grids more resilient, and making those applications for funding to FEMA and HUD at the federal level. Just like NIPA, you know, we're creating NIPA Vision 2030. We're also helping them, not quite to the level of detail that we're doing it, but at least a roadmap and a 10-year proposed investment plan for their utilities, both in Puerto Rico and in USVI. So we're working very closely with my counterparts, the CEOs in those organizations, and their boards. And the last thing is that we're really creating the context, creating the environment, so that they're thinking about incorporating more renewable energy into their system over time, just like how we're doing it in New York, such as energies, wind, solar, and storage.
What's the current state of, state of the state there? I mean, it's, so we're obviously leaning in and providing very necessary support, but whether you grade it or what, on a scale, I mean, how stabilized is Puerto Rico? Are we making, is general progress being made?
Yes, yes, certainly, you know, they were three months, just three months ago, both USVI and Puerto Rico were experiencing multiple regional or island-wide blackouts. Since our assistance over the past three months, they've pretty much stabilized the grid and have not been suffering the same type of blackouts. They're still fragile, but much better than three months ago. In terms of federal funding, it's been slow, especially in Puerto Rico. So with that said, we've developed at least, helped develop at least three packages that are now with FEMA for their consideration and waiting for review and approval. USVI is a little bit more advanced in terms of getting grants from HUD and FEMA, but it's a much smaller system compared to Puerto Rico. So both utilities are challenged. Puerto Rico, Puerto Rico's utility is going through a bankruptcy process.
Refresh our memory on PREPA.
Yeah, PREPA.
Refresh our memory and that...
Yeah, so PREPA is still going through their bankruptcy process. They are in the, in a process also to hire a private operator to operate their grid, similar to the Long Island Power Authority. The assets will still be owned by PREPA and the Puerto Rican government, but the operator could be a utility from the U.S. mainland to actually run in. So they're going through that. And USVI is a different situation, while they, you know, cannot declare bankruptcy for whatever reason, because they are a, not for whatever reason, but because they are a territory, there are rules where they cannot declare bankruptcy. They're also financially stressed, and by installing newer generation that are more cost-effective, that should provide some relief financially for them, and we're helping them in that process. So still a lot of challenges, but a lot of improvement since our engagement.
How much longer would you expect that we would need to be engaged? I mean, Maria's going, where are we going back, a couple of years now, right?
So, good question. So our goal is to, for Puerto Rico, is to substantially complete our work by March of next year. We will continue to have...
Team on the ground.
Yes, we will help them, we will continue to help them with applications to FEMA and HUD, and, but we can do that by, you know, more, you know, we can do some of that work here and with visits to Puerto Rico. The same thing with USVI, the substantial work that, you know, three out of the four, you know, the first bullet, third and fourth bullet should be substantially complete by the end of March. The second bullet, in terms of application for funding, we're going to continue to help them on an as-needed basis.
And beyond the application, do you anticipate some need to help provide bridge assistance to, not financial, but support until they can really implement and utilize that?
I would call what we're doing now is really the...
It's frustrating, obviously, for all.
No, no.
Especially them that are...
Exactly. Well, this is actually our bridge system, and we're going to help them. And I think the, where we can add a lot of value is helping them develop those proposals for federal funding. That's where we can make the maximum amount of impact. But in terms of grid stabilization, you know, we've pretty much accomplished that. We're tying up some loose ends between now and the end of the year. The, you know, their 2030 strategies will be done also by the first quarter of next year, so that will be handed to them and launched by them. So it's really more focused on helping them design a more resilient grid and then making applications for federal funding.
And no implication we shouldn't. I mean, it's just amazing that we're still at it a couple of years later, so...
Yeah, well, we, the team under Joe Kessler, they've been doing a fantastic job there, high-value work, you know? This is like SEAL, SEAL team that we're sending there and really helping, or Delta, right? SEAL or Delta, helping tremendously. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Gil? Well, obviously, looking forward, you know, great rap, great year and strong finish to that. We're excited in terms of the refreshed strategic vision, very excited. The canals is now hopefully imminent, and, yeah, can only hope the best to support our brothers and sisters in the Virgin Islands and Puerto Rico, so good work there.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Gil. Joe, SEAL, Delta Force SEAL Team Commander Joe Kessler.
Thank you, Chairman Colwell, trustees, and the public at large. I'll be brief as well. Looking at the operations measures for up through October this year, we're really doing a great job. The team has been good, and all these are projected to remain green. The dart rate, as you indicated, we're off just a piece. The denominator on that is hours worked, so we're hoping to work the remaining hours without significant incidents that'll contribute to that and hit that target as well. General market readiness is our measure around our reliability of our generating assets, the rotating equipment, and we're exceeding that target. Transmission includes not only, you know, forced outages or unexpected outages, but our ability to manage within the planned outages as well, and we are, again, exceeding that target that we projected there. And environmental incidents, we're actually going to look at that measure to tighten it up next year, because I don't want to say it's a slam dunk, but we've done a lot of good things in our fleet to make sure we're not exceeding some of the routine items we had on R22 and some other incidents, speedies permit violations and things like that. So doing a great job on all those. So I don't know if you have any questions on the performance perspective? If there are none, what I'd like to do is introduce Patricia Lombardi to talk about some...
That was very brief, Joe.
I told you I was going to be, I wanted to sprint through this. You have any questions?
You got a breath or what? That was...
I'll be back later. No, there's no other questions. We have some contract awards we'd like to bring forth to you, and I'm going to invite our Vice President of Project Management, Patricia Lombardi, to present those for you.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Good morning, Chairman, trustees.
Is it going to be that brief, or are you going to...
Not quite as brief, not quite as brief.
All right, going to give us full value.
Yes, so good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Patricia Lombardi, I'm the Vice President of Project Management, so I'm here today to present on behalf of utility operation for contract awards, all of which have been competitively bid, and the total is roughly 169 million. The first two items here on the slide...
Clarify, these are contracts, new contracts under existing, new awards under existing contracts, or we wanted to call it, right?
New contract awards under existing programs or part of the existing budget or the four-year budget that you'll hear more about today, yes. So the first two will support the ongoing TLEM program, Transmission Life and Extension Modernization, something the board has heard about on a number of occasions. And the last two items, I'll get into a little bit more detail, but are on-call retainer-type contracts for program and project management services, as well as emergency spill response services. So just to give a brief refresher on TLEM, again, something that we've been before the board on a number of occasions, the first two contracts that you'll hear about are in support of the ongoing TLEM, specifically at Niagara. So the main objective of the TLEM program is to, was established to maintain availability, safety, and reliability of our transmission assets across New York State. The overall program, which is comprised of roughly 20 projects, again, across the state, the, we're still within the original estimate of 726 million and still on target to be completed by 2025. To date, we've spent approximately 342 million, specifically speaking to Niagara, the trustees have approved 155 million back in 2014, and we've spent about 80 million to date. So this slide summarizes the four actions that we're here today requesting approval for. Each contract, as I mentioned earlier, that's been put before you today, has been competitively bid and evaluated and recommended for award in accordance with authority's policies and procedures. Again, as mentioned earlier, the first two contracts are in support of TLEM. The first is the ratification of a three-year, $29 million award to Ferguson Electric out of Buffalo, New York, for continuation of construction services in the switchyard, and the second is the approval of a three-year, $25 million contract award to Eaton out of Warren Dale, Pennsylvania, for replacement of the 13-8 KV switchgear. The third request is to approve six on-call retainer-type contracts, something that we've been before you, before, these types of contracts, in the aggregate amount of 100 million for a five-year term. The services to be rendered under these contracts include program, project, and construction management, project controls, including cost control, scheduling, estimating, document control, as well as strategic supply chain management and expediting. These on-call services will be utilized to support the authority's major capital programs. The last request is to approve five on-call retainer contracts to the firms listed on the slide, in the aggregate amount of 15 million, again, for a five-year term. Services to be rendered under these contracts include emergency spill response and disposal for land and surface water petroleum and hazardous material spills. So that's it, that's all I have, so thank you very much. I'll take any questions and ask for your vote.
Patricia?
Yes, Judge.
Are these all as a result of competitive bidding?
Correct, yes, all of them. These are all new bids, yes, all as a result of competitive bids, yes.
Why five years?
That is the maximum term that we're allowed under our, for personal services contracts under our EAPs. And I think it just helps us kind of keep the pool fresh, and we always relook at these services, so it's a good term for these type of services.
Is that the essence of your question, or were you asking why do we need to go out five years?
Both. So to answer the second part of the question, thanks, Chairman, many of the projects that we support, especially under the program project management services, tend to go beyond one, two, or even three years. So this helps us bring a firm on with specialized services that we can have continuity with. So it gives us a pool of vendors that are qualified to go to, so keeps that competition, but it allows us to retain that firm for a longer period of time if that project runs one, two, three, you know, up to five years. And many of the programs that you hear about, TLEM, SmartPath, Communications Backbone, these programs are very large and they run multi-year, so it helps keep continuity where we think we need it most.
And this will take you effectively through completion date.
For a good portion of them, yes, for a good, so the, these on-call contracts will be used for things like SmartPath, COMS, Backbone, sensor deployment, again, all these big programs that you've heard about before, and many of them are within that five-year term. And then again, we continue to look at these contracts as the capital program continues to evolve.
Are some of these contractors regional?
Yes, yes, some of them are regional, and again, within the contract awards, which were all evaluated in accordance with our policies, some are more targeted toward project or construction management, some are more targeted to project controls, some are more upstate, some are downstate, so there is quite a big breadth of work that's built into these contracts.
And part of the switchgear replacement is part of our digitization program as well?
In effect, the switchgear replacement is actually part of the TLEM, the Niagara project, that part of TLEM. So the first two contracts that you see there for switchyard construction and the 13-8 KV switchgear replacement, those are part of TLEM.
Trish, one question that I had, and I, this may be a question more appropriately for procurement, as you look at, you're awarding contracts, and I see like AE COMS doing work for you, but they're doing work in other parts of our business, how do we look at or evaluate where we're potentially overexposed with a particular contract? And how do you look at that? These are obviously big contracts, and so, do you look at that? Do you have, is it our procurement guys who...
It will work together, right? So there's a couple of big groups across the organization, including commercial ops that we work closely with, that tap some of the similar vendors. So again, when these contracts come up for renewal, that is part of the evaluation that goes forward. Exactly, capacity, right, exactly, capacity, breadth of your, depth of the organization, how deep is their bench, are they going to be able to support? And that's why the previous set of contracts that we brought forth before you, we only had a pool of three, which we learned our lessons, it was too small, that pool. We have a lot of work that's in front of us, ahead of us, so we've opened up that pool a little bit more. Six, we feel, is the right number, that's where the evaluation landed us, so it does give us a little bit more avenues to tap.
And to clarify the numbers one more time. So seven and a quarter is the overall project targeted number, plan number. You spent 340 to date, this is 170 on top, and the 340 total of 510. So we're 510 into the seven and a quarter, I mean, am I...
Three, so let me go, let me digest your question. So this is TLEM, back to the slide on TLEM?
Yeah.
Okay, so for TLEM, 726 million was the entire estimate across the state, so work at Niagara, St. Lawrence, BG, et cetera. We're 342 million into that 726. The Niagara portion, right now, that we've brought before you, out of the 726... The Niagara portion right now that we've brought before you, out of the 726, is the 155, that's what you've approved to date, we're 80 into that 155.
But this one...
So the two TLEM contracts, the 30 million, the 29 and the 25, that is underneath that 155 that you've already authorized for Niagara, which is again, rolls up underneath that 726.
And the 115 for the other services is under...
Those would all be budgeted to those jobs and within the four-year plan or within those capital expenditures that are brought before you for authorization under those specific projects. The exception would be the emergency spill response, that's really for us to be able to respond to something unplanned or unforeseen in a quick fashion. And then that would be, you know...
So the program project management services, that's a subset of a CapEx that we've...
Correct, Sears have been brought to you before, so this is our way and it's part of that total authorization, it's our way to be able to deliver. So this would be underneath those authorizations that you've already approved and again, within the four-year plan that's brought before you every December meeting.
Why a definitive term of contract as opposed to a per-project contract?
It is, so the, the master service or the retainer agreement is for five years, but when we go out and we let for a specific contract, it will be for a specific term. So if a project is only one year, we'll go out and ask those vendors to give us a proposal for that specific term, but the umbrella contract, that retainer, is for that total five-year duration.
I apologize, I'm slow this morning, so...
Did I give you the map?
No, this is, again, we're, context and all the rest of this, I want to make sure, you know, we've got this, or at least in a minimum, I've got this. So we're saying the overall TLEM budget is seven and a quarter, 726. Of that, we're saying Niagara is 155.
To date, the total Niagara is not worth 155, but right now of the program, you've approved 155.
Okay, you lost me there, what was that again?
So, just for speaking purposes, the total estimate of Niagara maybe is 200 million out of that 726, but the trustees have only authorized 155 to date. The 200 would be the, the next phase of the project that we just haven't come to you yet, we haven't scoped or gotten the design that far ahead yet.
Forty-five on top, I mean, forty-five, one...
Correct, on top of the 155, just for speaking purposes.
But here we're approving 54, all right? Fifty-four for that, so is that another, that's 54 on top of...
The 80, yes.
Within the 155.
Within the 155, correct.
And you're saying we'll spend another 45?
Correct, so there'll be future phases, like it's 2019, 2020, Niagara doesn't end until 2025, so we'll be back before you in the next couple of months to plan out that next five years of the program.
And the other 115, all right?
Yes.
Does that roll up under the seven and a quarter or that's...
No, this may be completely separate projects, SmartPath, COMS Backbone, they're not part of TLEM, these are separate projects and programs. We may tap these contracts to support TLEM and that would roll under 726, but it is to support projects outside of TLEM.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. As opposed to the first...
Yes, from, from a funding perspective, yes. From a funding perspective, yes, from a contract award perspective, they're all new, yes.
Okay.
So we've never pre-approved, we've never approved 115.
Let's still get our rhythm down with how this works, because frankly, obviously, I read it as though we're all, it's all rolling up under the broad-based TLEM or Niagara project and we're over here and what comes up through finance, I want to just make sure we've got good protocols, process in place in terms of, you know, what we get, you know, to look at with all this, okay?
Yep. You want separate motions on these?
I don't think we need it, or one, one motion and incorporate all four, or you'll take one motion and slice it four ways, whatever you want to do?
So move.
All right, we have a motion, second from Dennis, any further question, dialogue? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Trish, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Well done, appreciate it. Okay, Sarah, you're already up, way to go.
I know, I want to beat Joe.
I know.
That's right.
How quickly can you get this?
Exactly.
Yeah, but you got a billion and a half, so you gotta take...
No, that's not at this point, yeah, thank goodness, I'm going to be down quickly.
You got the Christmas tree award.
Yeah, I do, I do, yeah.
Exactly, three, three out of five.
You got the most holiday-looking card.
Exactly, you're welcome.
We can just put the red on top of the green and it'll be good decorating.
Should have reorganized that.
Well, my, you know, my message hasn't changed in terms of what we've been seeing in the commercial gross margin for the year. Our customer usage has been flat, you know, pretty flat according to budget, I think that that speaks to the strength of the load forecasting that the COMOPS group does and knowing our customers and their load profiles. The generation is higher, right, we've had greater flows coming from the Great Lakes on average over the last couple of years compared to the long-term average, but that of course is not translated into top-line revenues because we've seen the depressed electricity prices compared to when we set the budgets and that's reflected both in the electric prices and even though the fuel price is green, the gas sets the margin and so a lower fuel price translates into a lower electricity price. The gross margin will be below the 324 million that we had set in the budget for the year, based on where we are year-to-date, however, we are maintaining ourselves within the bands that were approved at the Executive Risk Management Committee, anticipate, you know, based on the forwards today, that we'll be in at about 3, 310 million probably for the year compared to 324. Again, when we put together the budget, it's a snapshot in time, right, and the markets are consistently moving. For 2020, we're focused and are setting the budget with, and going to be talking to it around the, the expected bands and so hopefully that will provide a little, a greater transparency as well as just realistic reporting on, on what we see in the market and how, how the markets move. Going back to your question, Chairman, with respect to the customer, the customer's always been a focus of ours at NIPA. I think that with this 2030 strategy, we're going to be articulating that in even broader way outside of how we interact with our customer base. Clearly, economic development remains a focus for ours and, and we continue to maintain significant amount of jobs for the state of New York, fulfilling our mission of economic growth and competitiveness for New York State, as well as the amount of capital that's committed. And I think going forward, as we roll out the, the strategy for next year, we'll be able to take a stronger lens to the, the green jobs that are being created when we think about clean economic development. I'm proud of the Clean Energy Solutions team, which, of which the kind of energy efficiency projects are a part of. They were very focused this year and have accelerated the projects in terms of delivery and so our customer investments and the capital that we've deployed for those project implementations are ahead of budget as well as the realization of the fees from, from those business lines, while our operating expenses are a little bit above, above what we set for the, set for the year. But in the end, I think we're finishing very strong and have the positive trajectory that I'd articulated before was our, you know, our plan for the year and going into 2020. And again, with energy efficiency, this really comes down to meeting the objectives of the state with respect to EO88 and the other policies that we've set in place in addition to now the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, so we're well on our way on executing on that and meeting those obligations. And then also really outside of the objectives of the state, all of these projects have bottom-line financial benefits for our customers where they see strong paybacks for the, for the work that's being done in addition to the greenhouse gas savings. Happy to answer any questions.
And if you're looking ahead, within the context of strategic focus and, you know, the evolution of working with customers, you, your team well-positioned to, to run that race?
I think so, yes, in the sense that we are very focused on our customer and we recognize that we're not entitled to them, right? At any given point, a competitor maybe out of the lateral, out of our lateral view could come, be it an Amazon, something that, a competitor that hasn't been typically in, in the area, could, could take our customer. I think that we've taken a, a couple of good steps this year and I'm hoping in the beginning of next year to share with you both the results from our customer satisfaction survey that we undertook with JD Powers. We don't yet have a statistically significant sample size to be able to provide the results, but I'm really pleased with the kind of interim results that we're getting from that, as well as the launch of our clean, customer digital experience, which is really providing the digital interface to all our customers where they can pay their bills online and really experience the same convenience and, and level of information that they get and that we get in our personal lives, really in the, in the professional context. And I think that that will, along with NIAM and our other, will enable us to continue to build kind of the services that we're offering to maintain the close relationship we have with our customers.
In terms of your team, you know, you've been repositioning, reorganizing, realigning, where are you at with that?
Well, we hired a Vice President of Product Development and Marketing and I think that she is a great addition to our team in terms of bringing the art and science of product development and helping us iterate our products to better meet the customers' needs. Then we also, with our expanded authority, are able to provide power outside of our existing customer base to government agencies and government, really government entities across the state. And with that, we're looking at ways to, again, in support of the state's goals, green, further green the supply that our customers may be getting. And so that will require also new skillsets to come in because of the level of portfolio risk analytics that needs to be, take place and that's, I'm looking forward to building that in the next year.
Sarah, one question I had, it's under the energy efficiency work that you've done and I know we're going to talk about, you know, the going forward, but obviously there had been some disappointment and delivery on this in the past, but, and you did a lot of work in trying to sort of restructure or reorganize the work. This would indicate that you feel like you've got, you're getting this on track, that you're actually delivering and, and having successful outcomes about this particular program, sort
Yeah, no, as I, you know, as I committed, you know, to the board and to, you know, my peers and the management team at NIPA, I'm really looking at positive year-over-year trajectories and I think that again, having begun really in, you know, Q4 of, of 2018, this has been, you know, a great, great progress and, you know, really my first year at NIPA. And I'm really hoping to build on that and, and clearly we have Keith, who was promoted to SVP of Clean Energy Solutions and is really helping provide even greater level of focus on that.
All right, thanks very much Sarah.
That was longer than Joe.
Good segue to Keith in terms of Recharged New York and power allocations and asserted resolutions for our consideration, recommendation and hopefully approval.
Nice to see you in person.
It is always nice to see you in person Judge, thank you and it's nice to be seen. Good morning Mr. Chairman, Trustees and all in attendance today. As recommended by the Economic Development Power Allocation Board on December 9, 2019, the trustees are requested to approve 6.5 megawatts of Recharged New York Power to the following: two large business retention allocations totaling 0.9 megawatts, five large business expansion allocations totaling 5.2 megawatts, and eight small business and not-for-profit based allocations totaling 0.4 megawatts. These allocations would collectively support the retention and creation of 450 jobs and over 155 million dollars of capital investment commitments. Please note that the date of the EDPAB meeting changed after trustee material was posted. Where our item material references a December 6 EDPAB meeting date, the correct meeting date was December 9, 2019. The balance of available Recharged New York Power to award is approximately 193 megawatts, of which 50% or 96.5 megawatts is hydropower. One way to replenish the program is through compliance action, which was brought to you at previous meetings. The 15 allocations will be distributed to 12 customers throughout the state. This item is submitted for your approval, I'd be happy to take any questions. I did however want to highlight one customer as I typically do, John Mezalingua Associates, located in Syracuse, New York, which is a manufacturer of wireless communications equipment and it kind of speaks to your earlier comments Judge. For 306 kilowatt allocation, they will be creating 100 new jobs and investments of 25 million dollars.
I was going to ask, what's the split on the 450 and the 155 million between new and retained? Is it primarily, so you just said 100 of the 450 are new jobs, is the other 350...
I could answer that in one second.
Do I have that or am I bad if I already have that?
That's quite all right, I do have that, just got to pull it out.
We can circle back.
Expansion, so...
I mean, 450 and 155 is an impressive number, I'm trying to determine how much of that is incremental versus what we're, you know, leveraging or building on's already in place.
Yeah, so 117, 172 of those jobs are new jobs and the rest are retention.
And how much of the 155 capital?
122 million of the, of the 155 is for expansion, yeah.
Wow.
So it's significant.
So 170 new jobs and 117 million of new capital?
122 million, yes.
That's fabulous, that's terrific.
Yep.
Okay, great. I think we knock these off one at a time typically, right Karen? Judge, anything you want to add to that coming out of EDPAB?
No, the, the board recommended the, these all be approved.
I'll take that as a motion. Second Dennis, thank you very much, any other questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the next item is regarding Recharged New York Extensions. As recommended by the Economic Development Power Allocation Board on December 9, 2019, the trustees are requested to approve three RNY power conditional contract extensions for the sale of 0.3 megawatts of Recharged New York Power to existing customers. These three existing RNY allocations include those companies who enrolled in the program in year one, that was 2012, and submitted extension applications that have been reviewed and evaluated by staff. If you remember, I've, I've probably brought over 300 of these to you in the past year under the extension process. The trustees are also requested to approve modifications to previously approved Recharged New York Extension allocations requiring adjustments to awarded amounts and/or supplemental commitments. These contract extensions are conditioned upon compliance with the existing contract. The three extensions collectively support over 300 jobs and 3 million in capital investment commitments. The extension contract will include or continue to include compliance provisions that allow the authority to reduce power allocations for those customers failing to meet their contractual commitments. The extension contract also incorporates a more developed approach by the authority to administering RNY power program in a manner that is consistent with the state energy plan and the clean energy standard. Again, this item is submitted for your approval, I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
So you were speaking really fast, which is appreciated.
I'm not as fast as Joe though.
But his was simpler.
Yep.
So just, you said, these are existing ones and so, all of these are meeting the requirements. You, you made a comment, it wasn't clear to me if we've, we're, if there's some who aren't meeting the requirements that we've laid out that, that are part of this, but all of these three are meeting...
They are, and if they weren't, we had already taken compliance action on them, brought them into compliance before we would approve these extensions, yep.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Now we talk about this periodically Keith, it would be helpful at some point if we all had the benefit, because I'm just doing some simple math, so the last one was six and a half megawatts, so it's 450 jobs, 150 million of capital. Here we got 0.3 megawatts, 300 jobs, 3 million of capital. That's a lot of jobs for 0.3 megawatts, it's not a lot of capital, I'm comparing, just comparing the two, so how those parameters fall, not to challenge, but just to understand what our guidelines are and expectations, so, okay?
Sure.
Great. Anything else from anybody? If we can otherwise have a motion to approve, thanks Mike, second Dennis, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carried.
Okay. This item requests that the trustees approve a 1,000 kilowatt allocation of replacement power to Unifrax LLC, a longtime NIPA customer, which is proposing to add a new manufacturing line at its Person Parkway facility in Tonawanda. The allocation would support the creation of at least 10 new jobs with a capital investment commitment of at least 36 million dollars. The company is planning to install a new production line known as the Line 7 project to meet customer demands for its polycrystalline fiber products which are used primarily in catalytic converters. Unifrax may also consider additional expansion opportunities at its facility in the future as their business continues to grow. This item again is submitted for your approval, I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
This is like proof of your point, we've got 10 jobs, 36 million dollar investment. The previous one was 300 jobs, 3 million dollar investment, so...
But this is 1,000 kilowatts, which is...
One megawatt, so it, it's sort of the, on the low end, but, but with respect to the capital investment commitment, the 36 million per megawatt is, is pretty significant, yeah. Yeah.
To me, it's, well, kept coming up with somebody just going to plot this, you know? What's, you know, where our median or what our targets are, what our thresholds are. So we just have some perspective and orientation. There's got to be some way we can template, template this out.
Yeah.
You know, back to scorecards, the red, greens, and yellows, that this is clearly in the green, this is a yellow, this is a red, but, you know, there's other mitigating factors, that kind of thing.
There are. And, and I have all the historical averages, which I could give you.
But if we can use those as benchmarks and more importantly, targets, what we want and need.
Right.
And that would help with either messaging and clarity publicly as to what we expect and want and need from those who are requesting support from us. Okay?
For sure.
All right. Any other questions on this one? Otherwise, motion to approve, please. Thanks, Dennis. Second?
Second.
Tracy, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Come down the whole stretch here, Keith.
Okay. This next item is regarding the Western New York Economic Development Fund. On October 2nd, 2019, the Western New York, uh, Power Proceeds Board recommended that two businesses be awarded fund benefits totaling $51,268. The related projects, which you received in your board books, are tied to approximately $360,000 in project investment and one job created, which is actually pretty good, um, when you look at the ratio of 12 and a half K, um, uh, per job over a salary of 41.6 K per employee. So good use of the funds. The trustees are asked to approve these recommendations. And as a reminder, to date, there's about 38 million of, uh, fund, uh, fund benefit awards that have been approved by you, and there's about 4.3 million available, of which approximately 747,000 is dedicated to energy-related projects. So again, this item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
What's been the, the pipeline, the, the activity level or application level has continued to somewhat slow, it seems to me, here?
Um...
Or sporadic?
It is, it is kind of sporadic.
Okay.
But we, you know, and, and you challenged me last year on this, and we have targeted outreach to key stakeholders
Right.
in the community to, to further promote the program.
Right.
So as you know, Rich Smith is out there and he's, he's beating the bushes in this.
We'd love to be, uh, I won't say giving it away, but we'd love to be allocating it, certainly. So...
Definitely.
Okay. All right. Unless there's any other questions, motion to approve, please.
So...
Thanks, Tracy. Second, Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Abstentions noted. All right.
Okay, so the next item is regarding the Northern New York Economic Development Fund. On October 16th, 2019, the Northern New York Power Proceeds Allocation Board recommended that one business be awarded fund benefits totaling $169,112. The related project, which you received in your board books, is tied into the creation of seven new jobs and 846,000 in project investments. Trustees are asked to approve this recommendation. Again, to date, about 1.7 million in fund benefit awards have been approved by the trustees, and there is currently about 3.3 million available, of which approximately 720,000 is dedicated to energy-related projects. Again, this item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take your questions.
So a third of what's available, quarter, third, whatever that is, is out, and, um, we've got, you know, double what's been allocated available. So, yeah, how we continue to promote it, how we continue to give it visibility and traction.
Mm-hmm.
So the stimulus that's intended here, uh...
And I believe there's some things in the pipeline as well.
Yes, there are.
Great. Okay. Uh, Judge, take that as a motion
Yes, please.
to approve. A second, Dennis. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Okay. Last but not least, the next item is regarding the Niagara Frontier Transportation Authority, NFTA. The Authority and NFTA are parties to a 1990 agreement under which the Authority sells 1,000 kilowatts of hydropower and energy to the NFTA for use, uh, by the NFTA's Regional Light Rail System, and 2,300 kilowatts of firm power and energy for use at the NFTA's Niagara Falls International Airport to support continual operation of the Niagara Falls Air Force Base, or Air Base, located at the airport. The Authority has created a new contract that completely supersedes the 1990 agreement for the NFTA and NFAB allocations. The extension contract also incorporates a more developed approach by the Authority to administering the, uh, program in a manner that is consistent with the state energy plan and clean energy standard. The current NFTA allocations are each scheduled to expire December 31st, 2019. The extension agreement provides for a continuation of both services to December 31st, 2024, and thereafter for successive five-year terms, unless canceled by either party with 90 days' notice. The trustees are authorized, are asked to authorize a public hearing. Again, this item is submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Is this based where the National Guard operates out of?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would move that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second?
Second, Michael. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Keith, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Busy morning. Thank you. Well done. All right, uh, as we talked, uh, earlier, Canal Corp., uh, we have to, uh, release, uh, some funds. Adam?
Yes.
Can you do that from your seat, or can you do that from the podium?
I will, from the seat. So, uh...
Should we release you, or, from your seat, or you can say right there?
Right here, right here. That'll be quick. So, improving the budget today for canals, which is approximately for the O&amp;M piece, it's approximately $91 million for that portion, um, excluding capital, excluding the, uh, capital development, the canal development fund. You would release one quarter of that year's O&amp;M, which is about $22.8 million, and then we will come back to you, again, for the following quarter and so on through the rest of the year, as we do these releases throughout the year. And then this way...
Consistent with what we've been doing.
Consistent with past practice, nothing different.
Which I realize is a bit of a nuisance for you guys, rather than one blanket approval, but it gives us, uh, multiple bites at the apple to ensure we're staying, uh, current, you know, with the evolution and progress, uh, thereon, and, uh, since we, you know, have joint, uh, responsibility for, uh, canals as well. So, okay?
And also...
Okay, so we talked about it in finance, but...
Exactly.
Yep, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, also, as we sort of think through, you know, the work at the canal, so this makes, this is very good as we go in...
Yeah, take it one bite at a time.
Yeah.
So, okay. Um, we talked about it in finance.
Right, yep.
You want to move it?
I will move it.
Move it, seconded. Any other, uh, discussion? Canals, otherwise marches on. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, motion carried. All right, with that, um, we had a lengthy Finance Committee meeting a couple, three, uh, weeks ago, chaired, uh, ably by Tracy, and you have, uh, a substantive, uh, report out.
I do.
Uh, working with, uh, a combination of the team here, so...
Exactly.
The floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks. Um, we had the Finance Committee meeting on November 19th, and we adopted, at that meeting, we adopted the consent agenda, which consisted primarily of the minutes of the last meeting. Uh, we also reviewed reports, uh, from staff and adopted motions to recommend to the full board, uh, for adoption, um, to adopt resolutions regarding four key items, which, um, the team's going to help us, walk us through today. Four of them regarding, um, capital expenditure authorizations that Joe will tee up for us in a minute. Uh, the other one is the refinancing of revenue bonds and the expansion of the commercial paper use that Adam will tee up for us in just a second. The third being the expansion of the Energy Efficiency Program, uh, funding issue that Sarah will, will walk us through briefly. And then the final being around the, the Nippon Canal 2020 budget. Um, I'll now ask for Joe, if you'll go first with your item, uh, to do an overview for the...
Certainly. Thank, thank you, Trustee McKibben. Uh, good morning, trustees, invited guests. Um, so these are the four authorizations that we brought before the Finance Committee. These are capital expenditure authorizations, or what we call SEERs. Uh, they are represented by items, uh, 6A1 through 6A4 of your agenda. Uh, per the Authority's capital, planning, and budget procedures, trustee approval is required for capital expenditures in excess of $6 million. All project costs are included in our, the proposed four-year budget and financial plan, uh, which you'll hear more about today. Um, the first request is for capital expenditure authorization, an amount of $341.2 million for the Moses Adirondack Smart Path Reliability Project. Uh, this project includes replacing approximately 78 miles of wooden structures on the Moses Adirondack 1 and 2 transmission lines with a single, single monopole. Uh, the lines will continue to operate at 230 KV, as they do today, but will be constructed to support, uh, 345 KV, uh, for any, uh, potential, uh, future upgrades. The total project remains at 484 roughly million dollars, uh, as previously communicated to the board. And of that 484, 142.6 million has already been authorized by the board. This capital funding request represents the balance of the capital funds for the project. The project is currently on budget and is scheduled to be completed at 2023. Uh, the Article VII application, uh, which was approved by the New York State Public Service Commission just under a month ago on November 14th, and, uh, represents a big accomplishment for NIPA. That's a, a milestone we needed to achieve. Uh, the second item on that, uh, if you want me to do questions in each one, or you want me to go through each, uh, item?
Yeah, why don't you just...
Go for all four?
Yeah, I mean, because we, you know, we went through all this in, in Finance Committee, so this is a bit of a drive-by for, you know, general awareness on top of what was then a public session, so...
And for those who weren't able to attend the...
Very good. So the second item is another SEER, uh, it's another request for $44.2 million for Phase 2 of the St. Lawrence Breaker and Relay Replacement Program. Uh, here they're sometimes referred to as BAR. Um, an integral part of the Transmission Life and Extension Modernization Program, commonly referred to as TLM. Uh, the scope of this project includes replacement of equipment at the Robert Moses Switchyard and remote substations. Of the 110 million dollar program, 65.8 million has already been authorized by the board. This capital funding request represents the balance of the capital funds for this project, and this project is, uh, currently on budget and scheduled to be completed by 2021. The third item is, uh, another SEER for $53 million for Phase 3 of our Communications or COMS backbone program, uh, an integral part of NIPA's Smart G&amp;T initiative. The objective of this program is to establish a dedicated redundant communication network that builds on the Authority's, uh, existing infrastructure utilizing optical, optical ground wire, dark fiber leasing, microwave networks, and fiber electronics. Of the total program estimate of $153 million, 100 million has already been authorized by the board. This capital funding, uh, represents the balance of capital funds for the project. Uh, the program, which requires outages for installation of optical, uh, ground wires on NIPA's existing transmission lines, is largely, largely dependent on the approval of outages by the New York State Independent System Operator. Uh, but is currently on budget and subject to outage availability, is scheduled to be completed in 2021. And the fourth and the last item is an expenditure authorization request in the amount of 12 million for the Advanced Power Flow Control Project, another project that is part of our Smart G&amp;T initiative. Uh, this project will deploy an advanced power flow control solution that can dynamically increase and decrease the reactance, thus increasing our transfer capability of existing transmission lines. Uh, the project is estimated to cost $12 million. Of that $12 million, uh, half a million has been previously authorized by the President and CEO of NIPA. Uh, the project is currently on budget and scheduled to be completed in 2021 as well. And, uh, those are the four items that I had, and be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, um, Joe. And for purposes of the committee, because some of these, where we do an approval, um, we have an estimate, you come in and you do early sort of funding, and then you come back to do final funding. Um, are you finding that all of these are meeting the expectations around what the estimates were, and they're meeting the planned program?
Right.
For all of these projects?
Right, so, yeah, right. So, so far, I mean, the big, the big bucket that we create is the, the original program that we described to you. These are, how far do we fill up the bucket? We'll be going after contracts and bringing two, uh, individual contracts under each of these, uh, in the coming months, actually. Uh, hopefully, uh, we're actually reviewing some of these as well with, uh, with your authorization. So, but all of them seem to be on track. Our estimates seem to be realistic, and our, our schedule compliance, with the exception of the, uh, our reliance on the outage schedule of the New York guys, so seem to be right on track.
Great. Any other questions?
Just one comment on the, uh, going back to the Moses Adirondack Smart Path Reliability. I was stunned when I saw that, 1942, those, those H, the wooden...
Those are actually our oldest asset in our fleet.
And so, the changing that is absolutely essential, and I think it's probably one of the most important applications of dollars.
Got a lot of mileage on that vehicle.
A lot of mileage on that thing. It's really, it's a great project.
It's dropped out of tires a couple times, but otherwise it's been running.
Just for historical purposes, when that was built, the energy ran from south to north, and it now goes in the other direction.
That's correct.
Right.
It's like a polar flip. It's, uh...
Interesting.
Copper wires.
Great, thanks. No other questions?
Other questions? Thank you.
Over to you, Adam. You're going to walk us through the, um, refinancing and the commercial paper.
Sure. The next item is, uh, 6AV of your agenda materials, and then we're here to request your approval for the refunding of 2007A and 2007C revenue bonds and expand, expanded uses of commercial paper notes. This is an opportunity for the Authority to reduce interest costs on its existing debt by refunding the Authority's 2007A and 2007C revenue bonds with proceeds from the issuance of Series 1, Series 2, and/or Series 3 commercial paper notes. This is an interim step preceding the issuance of a new long-term financing, both subject to receiving the necessary approvals from the trustees. Happy to answer any questions.
Glad we're accepting the gift the Fed has given us. I'm kidding you.
We've done it a couple, a couple times in the last couple of years as well, refinanced others, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
No question.
Great, thanks, Sarah.
Nice, positive move.
Next item, Sarah?
I'm, uh, speaking to, uh, Item 6A, Roman numeral 6. Oh, sorry. I'm speaking to Item 6A, Roman numeral 6. Uh, I'm coming before you to request approval of two items. We had a significant discussion of it, as the chairman noted, at the Finance Committee. There, it's in support of the, uh, customer demand for the energy efficiency projects that we implement on behalf of them that results in, uh, lower energy consumption and bottom-line savings, as well as supports the state's 2025 efficiency goals. Uh, since 2015, NIPA's energy efficiency project portfolio, uh, by way of context, has grown over 30%, and is at about 1.9 billion. And the number of projects has increased by 50%. Item 6A, Roman numeral 6, on your agenda is request to authorize an increase in energy efficiency program funding by 1.5 billion, uh, in order to, uh, support the execution of the pipeline of projects forecasted over the next five years. In addition, there's a need to replenish the pool of contractors to support implementation of this growing pipeline. Uh, therefore, I'm also requesting the award of 19 contracts for implementation contractors across New York State for project delivery, uh, purposes. There was a, an extensive procurement process associated, um, with this, oh, request for award that began February 4th of 2018, and, uh, was evaluated in terms of the, the responses by members of the Clean Energy Solutions Team, the Strategic Supply Management Team as well. Uh, bids were evaluated based on technical qualification, quality and completeness of submittals, understanding of scope of work, project history, qualifications with the services, technical and management methodology, and ability to meet W, uh, MWBE goals. Uh, based on this, the committee recommended that contracts be awarded to 19 vendors, as outlined in the item. Uh, three of these awardees are new to NIPA's vendor pool. And to address, uh, Judge McAndry's question earlier, of the, is part of this process, the regions, the state was divided into four regions to ensure that we had, uh, significant coverage of the state, or complete coverage of the state, and that we provided opportunities for, uh, various contractors, uh, that operated in perhaps only one or two of the regions, as opposed to covering the entire state. Uh, as you know, the program funding is recovered from our customers via project management fees and interest payments. Um, so I would, uh, happy to be, answer any questions you have.
Great, thanks, Sarah.
So just to clarify again, so the 4 billion that's already been, was previously authorized, as you just said, Sarah, that's, you know, that plus the billion and a half will be recovered over
That's the expectation.
future time. That 4 billion sits on our balance sheet today as a receivable in some form?
Yes.
Or another?
Yeah, of, yes. So we have accounts receivable currently of about 916 million. Um, loan principal balance is 563, and then the construction work in progress, which is the short-term loans, uh, is at 353 million.
All, all under the 4 billion that's been authorized, so...
Will be authorized, yes.
Okay. Well, the, the total authorized will be a billion and a five and a half, right?
Exactly, 5.38, yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to make, so with 4 billion that's already been authorized, you said we've got about a billion on our balance sheet?
Yes.
The other 3 billion sits where?
2.7 of it has been, um, spent to date, and 1.8 billion has been recovered. And then there's a certain portion
Got it, okay.
that actually has not yet been, um, used and are allocated
Got it, okay.
for financing, and that's taken into account
Great.
relative to what we're requesting, because we recognize that, um, there's still an amount to be allocated, and that'll be the recycling of the existing capital that's to be repaid.
Okay.
And this ties into the conversation that we talked about earlier, being part of the energy efficiency program. This is after you've done your evaluation and review, the, pun intended, efficiency and effectiveness of this program. And so this expansion of funding is in line with what you think, uh, your expectations of being able to deliver with this program, right?
Yep.
Yeah, great. Any other questions for, for members who weren't there? Great.
To me, the point there is, aside from the... To me, the point there is, aside from the significance of the dollar amount, it's really significant in terms of what's being done here.
Right, so she's been able to evaluate the program and make sure that we're actually?
Every project, you know, is vetted, and so we don't go forward with any project that we don't believe is going to provide value to our customers.
And the contracts will be, you know, will be determined, the amount will be determined later as, based on, as you try to deliver on the program.
Right, exactly.
All right.
We're going to approve some blanket resolutions for all of this?
Yeah, we have one more item.
We've got a fruit cocktail at this point. We're throwing the plan in and all the rest of it?
Pretty much. This will be everything from the committee up to the full board. So the last item for the committee was Adam's going to walk us through the NIPA and Canal budget. Your plans, 2020.
While Adam's walking off, can I ask, why don't we approve?
These three?
Well, those, all those awards, I mean, Joe's four, Sarah's, I mean, it's apples and oranges in terms of a plan and those awards. So can we do that?
Sure.
Adam's refunding the bonds too.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, that's, you're good with that? Okay, so the?
Is there any other discussion before we move forward with the plan?
So what we have is the four capital expenditure authorizations, the refinancing of the bonds and expansion of the commercial paper, and then the expansion of the Energy Efficiency Program, so a motion on those items.
Two turtle doves and a partridge in a pear tree.
Right, exactly. If I could get a motion in there. It's from the committee to the full board.
Right.
So I think no?
I'll take you as the motion. You're moving, Ed, as Chair. Got a second, Dennis, as a committee member. Any other discussion? Michael, Judge, anybody that wasn't already to that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Now we can pivot to 2020 plan, which also was discussed.
Right. This was discussed extensively at the Finance Committee, the last one that we had. And you've received very detailed information in your books, and we've had opportunity to have some question and answers and back and forth. But just to hit the high points, because I know we're running a little bit behind schedule, so, okay. So the main takeaways of the plan is that it fully funds our core business, including the canals, and achieves all of our strategic objectives, and as we, you know, eventually anticipating the new 2030 Vision Plan. Supports capital projects and O and M related to corporate strategy, which are consistent with the state's energy policy. And we will show how the revenue growth is outpacing the rate of expense growth so that we continue to have a greater net income each year. Maintains financial performance consistent with our AA credit rating, which is very important. We want to make sure that we achieve all of our coverage ratios, and our capital plan and all of our spending requirements are in line with the metrics that our rating agencies use to give us a AA rating, which is very rare for public utilities such as ours. Just in context of where we are this year, this was the nine plus three that we did at the Finance Committee. It has us doing better than plan. 31 million versus 20 million. Our latest forecast, that number's going to come in a little bit, so we'll still be above plan, but we'll be below the 31 million, but still above plan.
All on a non-operating basis, though. I mean, an operating?
Yes.
For sure to plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Most of that difference came from things like mark-to-market on investments. We did have lower interest costs than we had planned in the budget. That's a real savings, but yes, overall, it's all from non-operating. And then non-operating misses really because of the compression in energy prices that we saw that more than offset the increase in generation from hydro. The financial forecast for the next four years, for next year is going to be 41 million, and going up to 94 million throughout the planned forecast, as I mentioned before. It's going to maintain above all of our target coverage ratios for the bond rating. So that was a key principle going forward. And in terms of the four-year plan, this is sort of a breakout, just showing a little bit of the, what I call EBITDA, sort of the cash generated from our operating business and how that goes up. You can see it's very significant. And then we have non-operating incoming expenses to get us to sort of a NIPA income, and that's before canals. And then we have the canals equivalent of an EBITDA with their additional non-operating income expense, which is all depreciation. And that will get us to the total net income that we projected over the four-year period. Transmission customer margins are basically driving the income in the out years. Most of that is really coming from transmission. We'll show a little bit of how that happens over the next four years. And on the right side, it just shows you how the revenues are increasing at greater rate than the expenses. Just in terms of other trends or updates from last year, what we tried to show is what we were forecasting last year and what has happened this year. So this, the first chart on the left, the energy prices, just shows that the forward curves have basically come down from last year in terms of, again, the energy prices being lower in general, because of natural gas prices. In the middle, you will see that we do get a bump, and it really starts, we'll see it in 2021, and then comes back down in 2022 in terms of the Ucap or the capacity prices that we will get. So there's a spike, and then as more generation comes online, we're expecting that to come back down. Sarah's mentioning in her report, hydro generation was greater than was forecast last year, and so we do forecast it to stay generally at this level going into 2020, but then starting to revert to the mean and average down towards the long-term average.
Adam, if you could, before you go there, because we talked a little bit at the committee, if you could talk a little bit about the methodology changes that you've made?
In the modeling?
Exactly.
Right, so, okay, so the modeling is, so Finance used to use a model, and still does, which is a forecast model. We'll call it a deterministic model because it's taking a point in time and saying, what do we think we're going to earn next year at this point? What's our best estimate of that, and we still do that today. What we are doing now, as you may be familiar with, we have the ECRM model, which is going to be, which is used by Sarah's group. And this model, and we work with it as well, but we will compare our model against that model. But that model is a more of a probabilistic model, stochastic model, which, A, it not only tells you what the forecast is going out in the future, but it gives you ranges of probability of hitting that forecast. So it's more precise in that measure, so it'll give you sort of a confidence interval of how close you will be or what that range will be. And the importance of that is, and we also run that model every day. So I see it, Sarah sees it, we look at that model, we see changes in prices. But that model's not just for budgeting or financial planning. That's actually what we're going to be using to do our hedging strategy. So it's really a key to our business operational, and that's why we thought it was more appropriate that that model be the basis of our forecast this year. When we compared that model to the one we normally run, the differences weren't that great, but there were differences, about 4% difference or $14 million. One of the things that we do with the newer model, so it takes into account things that you wouldn't do in the, or have in the other model. So it assumes that, so our model, or the finance model, assumes that everything that you generate, you sell. And what you sell, you're selling at the highest price observed for that curve. In reality, what we're seeing, we know, is that we sell depending on where the peak prices are at that particular point in time of the day. And we also know that everything we generate, we don't sell, because we're seeing the sort of advent of the fact that some of the wind farms, or the wind power that's on, they can, they bid in at the auction market at negative prices. So sometimes we're actually getting shut out of the market, not being able to sell what we generate. So the newer models try to take into account some of that fine tuning so that we do it by looking back what was observed and using that going forward. So these are some of the nuances that just makes it a little bit more precise. So as we're trying to advance all these models in our forecasting, we want to just be as precise as we can, because we're making major business decisions based on that.
What do other public utilities do? Do they use one model versus another as an industry standard in terms of what models you use?
Yeah, I think the one that we are going to is more of a best practice and more advanced. So this is why we're moving in that direction. And I think we have a, I think we have a good model, and we, just through one phase of it, we're going to complete the other phase hopefully this year. So it'll be able to give us more functionality as well. Thank you. In terms of O and M expenditures, so this just gives you the outlook for the, over the plan period. In general, O and M expenses are going up 2.3% year-over-year, which is in line with inflation. You know, we are, certainly this year, we're trying to do everything, kind of keep costs as low as possible, get savings wherever we can, because we want to be efficient. And we're also mindful of the fact that our customers, in many cases, pay based on our costs. So we want to make sure that our costs are not being passed on exorbitantly to our customers, and that we can remain competitive in a market as the landscape changes. So cost control is definitely a priority. And we do have, we had some, really some decreases we're seeing in the O and M of the utility operations, and some of that is a dividend from the ISO 55,000 work that Joe Kessler and his team has done that have allowed us to do more capital upgrades or preventive maintenances, and it's avoided some of the operational unscheduled maintenances that we've had in the past. So we see some, about a $4 million savings, or actually $5 million savings year-over-year from that.
How does this support execution of the strategic plan, Adam? Or what's in here or not in here relative to the, you know, the evolving strategic plan? Is this business as it sits today? Is this the business that we expect it to be in '22 and '23?
Well, this is from the, from the O and M standpoint, it's really for current operations and the things that we know. And I said that some of these savings that we're getting, we're able to fund initiatives that we do have, like the NIM project and the ISOC, and the Evolve, and some of the things that the board has already approved. So, but things like Imagine, reimagining the canals, are not reflected here in the budget. As Gil mentioned in his portion, once that's rolled out and decided which, or which projects and initiatives will go forward, we'll come back and give you any update as to how may affect either the O and M budget or the capital budget. Our initial view is that predominantly, most of it should be capital-related, but I'm sure there will be some O and M potential costs as well. But we'll come back and give you an update on that. But the, in overall, in the plan, as we mentioned before with the refinancing, so what we're also doing is working with Eve and his group as the plan is being fine-tuned in terms of, from thematic to actual projects and what we're going to do. The finance organization's working very closely with them to make sure that we're aligned, and that, again, we can, when we do this long-term financing, we start building out our capital capacity, we can make sure that we can communicate to the organization how much of these projects we want to do going forward, and what's our capacity to do that. And again, we'll probably come back to you in March and give you an update on that as part of the strategic planning process. This is just an emphasize the point we were saying before, that the capital investments we're making, this is particularly for transmission, in terms of how does it result in revenues in the plan? So you can see it's very accretive. We don't only get a return on, of the investment, we get a return on the investment to, you know, seven and a quarter percent return. So it's very accretive to our financials over time. So these are, you know, the benefits of some of these major upgrades. The four-year capital plan, as we know it today, again, we don't have the canal piece in there, but it's $3.4 billion over the financial plan period. It'll be $8.64 million for next year. And I guess the main, or the key points is that, as of right now, most of these projects are already in flight. 85% of it is already continuing, and 70% of it is really geared towards strategic plans and strategic initiatives that have already been identified by the board. The plan of finance for this is roughly 50% debt financing, 50% reserve. So we'll maintain that throughout the period as well. And again, for approval today, we need a set of approvals that were recommended by the Finance Committee for the O and M budget of $519, the capital budget of $537, Energy Services budget for $257, and the, sort of the acceptance and allow us to post the four-year financial plan and distribute it in a way in terms of around the state and to the Authority's Budget Office and the State Controller. Also for the canals, the O and M budget of $93.6 million, capital budget of $69 million, and the canal development budget of $2.6 million, which is included in that $93.6. As I mentioned before, we did the release, it was, yeah, yep, yep.
Great.
What's the essence of the need for a four-year plan? What's the legislative premise for that?
It's part of the State Controller regulations that we post that four-year plan every year.
But what's the essence, why is it four versus one versus 14?
That's the long-term versus short-term?
Yeah, you know, I don't know, I suspect, well, I think it was just a lessons learned. It's, I don't know if it's limited value, because, you know, I think it's a lot of it was an outgrowth of what they learned, people learned from the New York City crisis in the 70s. They'd never had long-term planning or four-year financial plans. They would go year by year. So people looking at it, whether it be rating agencies, public, whomever, they're only looking at a year at a time. They don't see what is it going to look like over the four years, and how that gets refined over time, sort of their problems. You know, you can start to say, well, you have a gap in the third year or the fourth year. How are you going to reduce that? So I think it's, I think it was one of the lessons learned from the whole crisis that, you know, it's just good to have a four-year look as you update your plan.
Agreed.
Adam, there's, you mentioned early on in the presentation, the coverage ratios. Are those requirements of the rating agencies, or is that, some of that self-imposed?
It's both. We know what the requirements are in terms of the metrics of the rating agencies to maintain that AA. We don't need to be a double A. We think it's important to be a double A because it has great value to us, but there's no, we're not required by law to be a double A, but we think that's very important for the organization. But the trustees do have a two-times debt coverage ratio as a board-mandated target or goal, and as a, actually as a limit. So when we do the release of funds from capital, or anytime we do a release of funds, because all of our funds are pledged to our senior bondholders. So when we do a release for capital O and M, that's not part of that. So in order to release things from the bond covenants, the trustees have to determine that all other requirements of the trustees and our bond covenants have been met, including the two-times coverage, and then we can release the funds.
Thanks, Adam. Any other questions? This is our final motion from the committee to the full board. Approval of the NIPA and Canal 2020?
I'll take that as a motion to approve. Any other discussion of next year's plan? With that, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion and plan carried. Tracy, thanks very much. This is, it was a full and busy Finance Committee meeting, so thank you one and all. All right, our last item of the day is a goodbye, but hopefully not a farewell. Said Ann Kress resigned from the board within, I think, the last 30 days or so in connection with her accepting a new appointment as President of the Northern Virginia Community College in Northern Virginia, aptly named, upwards of 100,000 students, and just a wonderful career opportunity for her, and one that reflects her status and stature in the academic community, and certainly speaks volumes as to the strength of her abilities and credentials. She, we were proud to have her as a member of our team for the last, I think, almost five years now.
Yep.
Around five years. Her contributions were many and numerous. She consistently challenged us intellectually and otherwise, and said, "Love does is leaving us in a much better place than when her service started five years ago." So as we typically do, want to give that due recognition, but certainly in her case, for all she brought to this board, all she brought to this organization, we're happy and proud to convey to her in the form of a formal resolution, which I will not read, but everyone is welcome to do so. but everyone is welcome to do so, but enthusiastically, you know, the classic mixed emotions, but in this case, far more excitement than not, that she has such a wonderful opportunity ahead of her, and we thank her tremendously for her many years of service here and the significant contributions to our organization. So I'll ask for a round of applause as well as, I don't think we need any formal motion to convey our resolution, but Ann, oh, there she is calling now. Judges say thank you.
In fact, Mr. Chairman, I just got a text from Ann Kress. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry I couldn't be there. Please thank all of my fellow trustees. I learned so much from each of them and from all at NIPA.
Very kind, well timed and coordinated. So Ann, if you're tuned in, we appreciate it. Our best wishes for continued success. With that, we bring our meeting to a close. Thank everyone for their participation and attendance again today. Certainly want to wish everyone a very healthy, happy, and enjoyable holiday season. I believe we're talking about the new year again, but it's right around the corner, and we will all be back to you sometime late January. What is it, Karen?
29th.
January 29th. So same place, same station, same time. We'll see you next year. Thanks very much, everyone. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.